Okay. Open the meeting for comments of the public, Harry you shot the floor.
Thank you.
As I promised.
Let me just start by saying that it was really an honor yesterday to be part of the parade and to be part of the process and so on. It really hearkened back for me the times when Leo was running the parade and so on. It was really great. And it was, from all the comments I've heard from just about everybody, it was one of the best ones in a long time. And just a lot of variety and so on. And they made efforts in many different areas which I thought were really good in terms of just not throwing the candy as much and, you know, little things that make a difference. I remember last year, I think it was last year, yes it was, one of my Democratic colleagues who did not win the election managed to drag race up and down the street and leave major marks for the future and so on. And it kind of left a bad taste in everybody's mouth. And I think this year in contrast, it was just, it was really well done. It was really close when we were doing the judging and we had a tie vote and so it was quite something to say. The first bit of bad news I have is dealing with the issue, and I think I mentioned this to a couple of you already, but I wanted to formally tell you that we did not receive the grant for the bike path. It was something that, we received a partial funding for an overall county recreation plan, which we're going to try and include this bike path. You guys signed off on it, George attended a meeting with the mayor Champlain and both town supervisors and we all kind of got together and we all said we'd go ahead with it and so on. I believe someday there will be this bike path. I have believed that for about 15 years, but I do think it's the right thing to do. I think recreation is our future. And that old railroad bed is the perfect spot and it would be connecting communities and also it would be a safety issue, especially for Ross's Point children who still, you know, during Regent's Week and Finals Week are biking up the old golf course road there and there's no, there's no shoulder. So it's a miracle that something hasn't happened down there. So hopefully that'll happen. I think, I was given a lot of assurances right up until the budget crunch and of course you guys know what's going on in Albany right now, nothing. And so we're really behind the eight ball and it also impacts another item which I'll get to in a minute. I did have a chat with Al Rasco, George, after you and I had talked about, you're having four roads, four streets done here at Ross's Point. And I asked him to come up with, if he could, a rough estimate, I don't know whether you had done it, in terms of what he saw as potential savings. And he was somewhere between around $10,000, 10 or 10,000 plus. I don't know whether that jives with what you had anticipated or budget or whatever, but certainly an example of shared services where you have a situation where the county can, you know, buy asphalt and use their man. And what they're doing, you probably know this, they're doing everybody up here once. They're coming up and they're starting with the town of Champlain this week, then they're doing you guys and they're going over the village. So the 10 or 12 people that the county is committing up here are going to be right up here for the duration, maybe as long as two to three weeks. I attended a meeting, we actually had a retreat at the airport and I just wanted to kind of report to you on that. During the last year we managed to have 44,000 deployments. Now that means that we're eligible for an extra $1 million for the county airport and airport funding. And I think that we did an overview of the funding issues and we have spent out there about $30 million, received 29.7 back and so the amount of difference has been made up with fees and so on and passenger fees. So right now there has been zero increase in the county tax rate based upon the best estimates we have of the airport. Now you will read in the paper issues like parking at the airport and why we don't charge for parking. Would it be a revenue enhancement? Of course it would. But also for the people coming down, 80% of the traffic is Canadian, for the people coming down, they pay a fortune to doorbell a park. It's free down here. And so it's an inducement for them to come down. And I do think at some point we will get to the issue of charging for parking, but I think right now it's, what we're doing is part of a marketing strategy, just so you know that. We also are putting in more parking improvements. We have $1 point million committed to that. And we also have, and it certainly doesn't get a lot of publicity, but we have 26 tenants down there and at the airport and that brings in about $800,000 in revenue. So it's quite impressive, it's quite an impressive operation. Again, I don't know how many of you have been down, has anybody flown out yet? No?
I've been there a few times.
They've been there. So one of the things that they will do for us, and if you guys are interested, I can set it up, is get a tour if you want one, the board or whatever, if you want to get out there and take a look, some boards have done that. And it would be great if you'd like us to do that. Sales tax, you've probably heard the word that we're below our estimated sales tax for the year. I think that you're still probably going to be on the sage side if you use the figures that we gave you because it's going to be fairly close to that, but right now it is going down, it's going down everywhere. We are probably better insulated than most counties in the state of New York in terms of that, just because of the Canadian business coming in. I was going to ask you how you felt the computer change went, you attended the classes, is that, is it okay or fine? You were kind of the guinea pigs here, the villages first, the towns, I went to, when I went to the town meetings, they were all concerned, but they said, we know Ross's Point is a tough community in terms of salesmanship and if you can sell Ross's Point, then the town of Champlain or the town of Moores, they're not worried about. So I thought that was a, and so I haven't heard much. Of course, the school district is next and they were also looking to see it, so you may get some questions.
That's a nickname of Siosnich.
Jennifer called me the other day and I just told her a couple of major points that I thought should be changed.
Good.
Because one of them, they should have an 800 number.
Okay. Let me just write that down and make sure.
They should have an 800 number and the other issue was the tax program that we had previously, it automatically updated every day to the internet. This one here you have to do manually and when all things go sometimes you forget to do it when you're busy. That's a major problem, you start getting into the penalty periods because not even using the program daily, so if you don't manage to do it.
What was their response, could they do the automatic updates or not?
Jennifer told me the issue was going to pass along to the treasurer's office.
It doesn't hurt for the legislature to also inquire and see where we are on that issue. You probably know this already, but we've opened an office up and made it available to Betty Little down at the county, so they do have an office down there. Bonnie Lucas is manning that. Initially, there was some politics involved only because they said, well, you know, it's a Republican seat. Well, it isn't a Republican seat. It's a seat where people run for the office and so for us to have a senator, forget who it is, is in my opinion a good thing. I did not do it in political terms and, I don't know whether I had a chance to tell you guys, but this is the least political, well, I've served on a lot of boards and some ideological, meaning you've got people who want to do more and people who want to do less, but at the county level, the reputation was not always the best for, over the last 25 years. Okay, I'm not speaking in the last maybe five or 10. But literally you walk in there, you check your Rs and your Ds at the door and we only debate issues. And there has not been, in a year and a half now, there's not been one party vote yet on any individual issue. So, you know, I'm really proud of that.
Do another mistake senate.
Oh my God. I mean, it's the reason I ran for the office and if, we had to sit there and wrangle each week about, you know, what the Republicans thought and what the Democrats thought, it was just, it would be not only counterproductive, we'd be unproductive at all and we're getting a lot done. One of the issues that has, you may have heard about, is the, which I've attempted to kind of, you know, spearhead the legislative part of it, is the celebration for the quarter centennial and the mosaic. And a lot of students in Northeast Clinton were involved in this project. We, because of our location, Ross's Point of course, had the Native American part and the Champlain part because Champlain was right here. So, and I've seen, the mural is not up yet, but I've seen it and it is very impressive. And the students all over Clinton County, all nine schools participated. We're going to have it unveiling probably the end of July and it's going to be right on the side where all those dead vines were that we had to cut off and so on. And it's going to be very impressive and it should, it should be there forever and it goes from the 1609 right up to 1873, which was the incorporation of Keyesville. So hopefully, you know, it's the kind of thing that when the county puts some money up, not only do we get bang for our buck, we get students involved, we're going to have a ton of Iowa vet, parents and grandparents at this unveiling, we're actually going to have an unveiling, we're going to cover it up and after we get it up and so on, but it'll be lighted and some maybe the lights won't be in right away, but it's a very impressive thing. And the children of Clinton County and specifically in this area can be, can be very proud of that. Last thing I have is this volunteer firefighter proposal that I decided to, in the campaign when I ran, so many people said, "Harry, we can't get people to serve on, you know, volunteer fire departments or EMTs." And George and I talked about it and what I did was, I ran off, just a copy for you to take a quick look at. We were able to pass legislation on this, but the state of New York is sitting on everything and I don't know what's going to happen right now. So, in any event. And basically it's a, it's a three-pronged issue. The first one deals with property tax reduction of 10% at the county level, that's the only thing we have control over. Secondly, allowing the farmhand to be able to take, they get a $200 credit now, be able to take both the $200 credit and the property tax. And then also increasing that credit to $1,000. And the fourth part deals with the issue of number of years of service and if you could get some of this property tax reduction in as far as a retirement benefit. And that's an issue that you guys are going to have to deal with. We passed a local law unanimously and it does have a number on it and it is in there, but I have a funny feeling that it isn't going to make it through this year because of what's going down down in Albany. There isn't anything that we could have done about that part, but it will happen. 28 other counties do it and so it's something that is going to happen and in discussing this with a number of firefighters and I want to give the mayor a lot of credit, he came down to a county meeting, he spoke, John Philion was there also and they spoke and there's nothing better than having two dedicated farmhands there talking about recruitment, talking about retention in terms of firefighting for any of the naysayers to say, "Okay, you know, these are the guys that are saving my life, these are the guys that are saving my home and my children's home and all that kind of stuff." So it was certainly, certainly very effective.
Are you saying that, are you saying that, if I could interrupt you, that Mr. Philion and Mr. Rivers found common grounds or are you for the county?
It was, it was an impressive site, that's all I can say. They were, they were on the same page and it was, we were actually supposed to have, I think it's Raymond Faris at Fair.
From Moores.
From Moores, we're supposed to be there and couldn't make it. And so it was just one of those things where it may not always be common ground, but in this particular instance, we had some and it was, it was very impressive to see. And they each came at it from a little bit different point of view and so on and it was, it was very impressive and I, I knew when they got done, wasn't sure before we started, but I knew when they got done that we were going to have votes to do it and we had to compromise a little bit on a couple of things, but we, what I wanted to have was a 10-nothing vote, that's what I wanted and that's what we got.
That's good.
Okay. So how this affects you? Well, it's the same as the veterans exemption, it will be. And in bringing it up to some other boards, they don't do that. So, you know, there, there may be some pressure, you guys, you know, it's up to you, it's your choice. The biggest piece of this, we should all go if we want to see this done, is go to the school board because that's $20 out of the 30 per thousand in terms of the tax abatement. So, you know, I'm hoping that what will happen is that once this legislation passes, it will allow you, and I'm not sure what your methodology is for the village, whether you need to pass a local law or whether you just need to have a resolution, you will need to hold a public hearing that's in the statute and so on, I'm sure you know that. But if the county and the towns and the villages pass it and they all pass it and they're all willing to put up their little piece and it really doesn't cost that much money, then the pressure will be on the school district to, and again, you know, I don't know, I don't even think we're talking about 75, 80 firefighters, you know, in the school district. I don't think you're talking about that many. The question's going to be issues like, is it retroactive? The 20-year retirement benefit, does that, do you grandfather in people who already have 20 years and if they retire next year with this, do you give them the full tax abatement? Those are, those are tough issues that each municipality is going to have to deal with and I, I don't even know how the county's going to deal with the retirement part of that piece. But you guys can, you know, you can discuss it and talk about it and so on, but I will be at whatever school board meeting it is, attempting to speak in favor of that. But it would be really great if at that point, and we may be a year down the road here, so it may not, we're not, there's no rush to judgment here, but at some point, it may be that if we had a representative from Ross's Point, the town of Champlain, the town of Moores and the village of Champlain and myself and we all went to the meeting to try and speak in favor of this and you guys see these school board members on your own, so it's not a stretch for you to, in a social situation, to mention something, that maybe this would be an effective way to say thank you and to look at. Because for the young man or young woman entering the force, you know, they still have to go five years, they don't get it right away. It's a, there's a five, it's not, you just sign up and you get it. It's a, it's a, there's a five-year layover before you pick that up and five years of service, but. So anyway, I wanted to end with that, but if you have any questions, my, my methodology over the last year and a half, the first year, I was really, I just didn't attend very many meetings up here because I can't tell you that I had three or four in Platteford just trying to learn how to be a county legislator. Right now I'm on a three-month cycle, so my plan is, and I certainly won't talk for 20 minutes every time, but my plan is to try and make a meeting every third month if possible. You know my phone number if you, or if you see me, if you need anything, George and I may have a conversation about personnel somewhere down the road here.
No, you'll have it with Carol.
Okay. Okay. Well whoever, we'll have it and so on. And, you know, the bottom line is that, is that I have learned something which, you know, I guess I knew beforehand, but is that all these county employees, all 832, and they've worked for the county legislation. And if, there is just a difference when the legislative personnel get involved in conversations. It's a different tone, it's a different attitude and, you know, I'm not saying it's a different result because nobody can guarantee that, but I do think it's, it can be an effective way to get people to be as responsive as they should be to the needs. So I don't know if you guys have anything you want me to look into or any questions I can answer now, I'd be happy to do that. If not, I'll be quiet.
Sure. Whole part. Dr. Hines threw my socks off at that meeting when he came out, because I, that would be the last man I think I'd ever suspect of would do that.
Yeah.
And he totally surprised me. Very, I'm very pleased and, but.
Well, I think you sold it, George. I think, I think the idea was that, you know, let's, let's really put something out there. Let's see if we can put 1,500 or $2,000 a year out there and see where it goes. See if we can, we can induce people to say, not only, well, do I want to join, but, you know, I'm now having my family, but I'm still going to do this because it makes an economic sense to stay in the fire department, not just, you know, just doing it because you love people and you want to help people and so on. There's an economic bang for your buck here. So, yes, George, I was pleased with that too. It was, it was great.
Any questions for Harry?
Why did the mural only go to 1873?
Because that was the last incorporation in the county of a specific place and so was Keyesville. That was the last one.
How about 1877?
Well, I think they were doing town, I, there is something on Ross's Point at the end of that too, but I think they did end with, I'm not sure of that, but I think that, I think they told me they ended with 1873. I think because they did so much with the settlement of Ross's Point and Josh Rouse that may be right though. Because I remember that well, your father was mayor and we had a ball out here, the centennial celebration. That was the first thing he did. He said, "Young man, I'm putting you in charge of this thing." I don't know if you remember that or not. It's the first thing I had to do. Oh dear. Anyway, but you're right.
All righty, close the meeting, close this part of the meeting, your chat's at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting of June 15th, you all have a copy. Is there any additions or deletions? If it's not, I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting, June 15th.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burt. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the user sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills. All have copies for the bills. Do we have any additions?
We have one addition this evening, it's to Montgomery Hall's hook and ladder, it's in the amount of 1,00944, it's additional, it's banned for July 4th.
I'll make a motion to waive the bills today, as a nominee.
Move by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burt. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the user sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
Okay, the first item I have is from the Ross's Point Dodge Memorial Library, it's an invitation to the board to attend the 2009 Be Creative and Express Yourself Your Library Summer Reading Program kickoff. And that's going to be held tomorrow, July 7th, and it's at 10 o'clock in the morning and the guest is going to be Speedy Arnold, the storyteller, singer and illustrator. It's free of charge and you're all welcome to attend. The second item I have is from the state of New York Department of Transportation to the mayor on behalf of acting commissioner Stan McGee. I would like to thank you for your recent letter of support for the Northern Tier Expressway. The Department of Transportation recognizes the importance of Route 11 corridor and its development both regionally and statewide. Acknowledging its importance and the overall cost of a single corridor-wide project, it is felt that the best strategy for developing Route 11 corridor is the development of location-specific spot improvements along the existing corridor. The recently completed Route 11 corridor study recommended a variety of short and midterm transportation projects to improve safety and travel time as well as address quality of life issues along the length of the identified Route 11 corridor. These projects and corridor development strategies will be prioritized and instructed as funding becomes available. This strategy will allow for measurable achievement to occur along corridor which could, excuse me, which would not be enjoyed if a single expressway project were to be progressed. And this was from R. Kerry Vaviak, the regional director. Next item I have is from Angelo's Pizza and Grill, it's as per alcoholic beverage control law, section 64 and 109, is our requirement to inform you of our intent to renew our liquor license. Liquor license serial number was listed, return within July 1st to June 30th. And that's from the business owner of Angelo's Pizza and that was certified to me. The next item I have is Montgomery Hall's Hook and Ladder. We wish to inform you of a new member who has been approved to our company for a probationary period of six months, Sierra Tetro from Ross's Point. Please act on this member as soon as possible. Dennis Roberts, if you want to make a motion to...
Excuse me? Make a motion, accept the new member? Montgomery Hall's Hook and Ladder?
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Cooper. Any discussion? Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The next notice I received was a notice of electronics disposal ban. It's to the all Clinton County residents, businesses, commercial haulers and organizations that in accordance with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation guidelines and in accordance with the Clinton County Solid Waste and Recycling Law, please be advised that effective August 1st, 2009, disposal of electronic waste, computers, CRT screens, televisions shall be prohibited from being disposed of in the Clinton County landfill. Recycling and disposal of electronic waste will be provided through Clinton County's mandatory electronic recycling program. Drop-off locations for electronic waste items will be on the Clinton County landfill located at 286 Sand Road in Morrisonville, New York and at the Moores Transfer Station located on North Star Road in Moores. And it lists the fees and it's just a little notice, everybody, that effective August 1st is to be taken place. The last item I have is a request from Teresa Davison of Moores, New York. On behalf of the Northeast in Clinton class of 1979, I am requesting the use of the grounds and facilities at the Ross's Point Recreation Park for Saturday, August 8th, 2009, for our 30-year class reunion. I am also requesting a variance for alcohol to be brought on the premises for that day. And that's from Teresa Davison.
I'll make a motion to allow them to use the rec center on the Saturday, the 8th of August.
Did anyone check with Mike to be sure?
Mike wasn't in today, so I will check with him tomorrow and if it still be approved, if that is okay, I'll truthfully, it has to be done.
You second.
Yeah. That's for the weight of the open container law also?
Yes.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Cooper. Discussion. I think we need to go back to our old ways, see that's a Saturday, we will charge a $50 fee, they will, one person will come in and get a key for a rec center because it's a Saturday, there won't be anybody here and on the return of the key, the $50 will be returned.
We used to do that previously and...
Makes sense.
They're responsible.
You expect to have employees here all the time?
Yeah, we don't have to have an employee.
If there's any problem with garbage.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Have somebody in charge and responsible.
Can you put that in the letter, Carol?
I will.
Please.
And you want to deposit the $100?
I'll get a key.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll see how this goes. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, reported by the mayor and the board of trustees, first thing on my agenda is discussion engineering contract, engineer's contract or agreement. You got the new proposed agreement? Is there any, any problems with it? I don't see any with it.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to allow the mayor to sign the engineer contract.
You after that? A second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Cooper. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the user sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 1997 police car, we had a couple of bikes, but no takers. I put a, a minimum bid of $2,000 on it, we may just want to remove it and take what we can get. I can't, this is only personal, but I can't see paying money to advertise it in the paper for sale. You pay $75 for a nab.
Do you want me to put it on the website?
Yeah, please. Put it on the website.
We'll, we'll do up a thing, put it on the website and then we'll post it and, you know, and...
Sure.
But you're going to do away with the $200,000 minimum bid, right?
Yeah. All righty.
Except any bid.
Except $2.90.
Or any reasonable bid.
Yeah, that's way broader.
Did you want to put a deadline on it? Nah, let it go. Ain't going to hurt nothing, it's not hurting anything back there.
I thought we were going to hurt it and get rid of it.
We're worried about getting rid of it.
We hit it.
Fourth of July.
Can we use that for like, can we make a float out of it, cut the back and do it together? They do that sometime.
They did that Champlain several years.
Didn't the fire department have one of those?
Champlain, yeah. Well, we got a brand-new police car, we can use one half of that. They look the same. All right, next thing on my agenda is the JNS amendments for Verizon whole wireless. This thing has been pending long enough, but have you had a chance, board, to look this over? Bottom line is, what they said in here, JNS amendment, this whole thing is that, it whole thing's hinges on what Landmark says. And they have, they have sent new, I thought, did anybody get a copy of that, what they had sent? In, in the agreement that Verizon, if they, they put the wires on the outside... that it will be covered and painted the same as a tank, so you don't notice some black wire running down. I know a lot of people are wanting to get this done. Looking for self-coverage.
So when's one landmark gonna make a decision?
After they deal with Verizon. Verizon's gotta deal with them, but they want permission to, you know, if you read this thing, an agreement.
My understanding was that Landmark was gonna review what Verizon was gonna do to their tank, and then they would, that Landmark would decide whether or not that's agreeable.
Whether that's acceptable or not.
And then they're gonna charge Verizon?
Yeah, twenty-five-hundred bucks.
And what are we gonna get out of it?
No, that's just to review their plans.
Okay, and if they say no?
They say no, we get nothing. You know, everything is off. I don't know what Verizon will do then. Because they didn't want to, J and N wanted to build a tower.
Right.
And Verizon didn't want to go on it, and they wanted, and if they did go on it, they wanted to cut down their payment to the village.
But if, is the cost, obviously the cost for Verizon to hook up the water tank is going to be passed on to the consumer like the cable company?
I haven't got a clue, John.
I mean, in other words, they're gonna raise the rent, the rent for the...
I can't, I can't answer that, because I do not know, you know...
But we have to do, okay, this way, go forward and find out whether the tank, the Landmark's gonna be okay with it if they use the tank.
Yes.
This is the first step, so we're gonna have to...
We should do that, then.
Let's do that.
Get rolling on this. And if they say we can't do it, well, then that'll be, we'll get across...
They'll have to look at...
I'd like to make a motion that we okay this thing and go forward.
Okay, I second on that.
Moved by trustee Cooper, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Okay, and request an executive session on litigation.
Second.
We'll call, vote trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Burtz.
Aye.
Trustee Cooper.
Aye.
And I vote aye. And then you all, I think you all got a little card. Probably trustee Cooper did not, because he's probably not on the mailing list yet. But it's a heads-up about their, at the State University in Potsdam. They hold us every year in October. It's a one-day workshop, and it's, I don't have the agenda yet, it's not out, but it's for planning board, zoning board, municipal clerks, community developers, budget finance officers, code force predecessors, board members. I attended a couple of these. You need to look at the agenda, and if you see something that you like, then try it out for it. Okay.
Do you want to prove anything to go now, or?
We got time. It isn't until October. Okay. Okay, I want the motion to allow Verizon, the clerk, to go to public legal notice for local law three, which is the changes to the, no, law.
Can you second?
Motion seconded, is there any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And the last thing on my agenda, personally would express sincere thanks to Jerry Farrow and her crew. For the Fourth of July celebration. I can't say enough. The girls worked very hard to put that thing together. And I think the fruit of her efforts was yesterday. I think everybody, I heard nothing but good comments. And certainly appreciate what she's done.
I spoke to the Democratic Chair, Mr. Marty Mannix, and he said he attended all the parades. He said this was the largest parade and the best organized. So it's a very good tribute to Jerry and...
Yes, it is.
Jan Luterno and McFendrich, and Ryan Jefferson on the phone and everything. I think the village had a, certainly a bright star on Sunday night.
Very good. I heard a lot of time with the parade.
Okay, that being said, that's it for me, trustee Jefferson.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Rivers. Just a couple of quick items on my agenda tonight. The first quarter of the two thousand test result for the total, dry halum methane was fifty-four point six, which is below the MCA, maximum contamination level of eighty. However, our running average remained above the MCL. The first quarter of two thousand test result for halocetic acid was fifty-six, which is below the maximum contamination level of sixty. However, our running average remained above the MCL. The second quarter test result for the total dry halum methane is sixty-four point nine, which is below the MCL. And our annual rating average is seventy-six point six five, which is now below the MCL of eighty. The village of Rouse's Point is now in compliance for total dry halum methane. So basically, what we did at the water tank looks like it is affecting our water in a good way. So that's, everybody got a copy of this, and they're...
What exactly have they done differently, so the public would know?
They did that injection site where the chlorine goes into the dank, at a tank level?
It moves into the water.
Sorry, it goes into the water, and...
Before or after it goes into the tank? After.
After.
Yeah, on the way out.
On the way out.
So the contamination time isn't quite as long as it has been, so our results are lower.
They're lower, exactly. Yeah, so that's good news.
Yeah, very good.
Okay, and the other thing I have tonight is Dennis Roberts asked me to read this real quick. It's just a short thing. Montgomery Hole's Hook and Ladder Company, the number-one volunteer company of the Rouse's Point Fire Department, thanks you for your patronage. The purchase of ladder truck, the pickup, the rescue boat, and twenty-five percent, the cost to the ambulance, was accomplished with funds provided by your patronage of the various fundraising activities. And the total for these purchases was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of money that's been donated by people in the village for the items that I listed. So I want to thank those guys for all they do in the village, all the men and women in the Montgomery Hole's Hook and Ladder. And it was a great parade, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Burtz?
The only thing I really have, and I might go off on the agenda, because I do have a few things here, but originally it was to request an executive session to discuss personnel issues.
Second.
Moved by trustee Burtz, seconded by trustee Jefferson. We'll call, vote trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Burtz.
Aye.
Trustee Cooper.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And the second thing, I would like to request an executive session to discuss rec center personnel.
Second.
Moved by trustee Burtz, seconded by trustee Jefferson. We'll call, vote trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Burtz.
Aye.
Trustee Cooper?
Okay, the only thing I have is a...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, I need your vote. And the mayor votes aye. Anything else, John?
Yeah, I would like to bring to the board's attention, I spoke to Donald Eso, trustee Cooper and I did a couple weeks ago regarding the lease at the library, the library roof. I spoke to him this evening, and he said that a quick fix, there's like two hundred tiles that are loose, causing problems. And he said he could temporarily fix that for around forty-five-hundred to maybe five thousand dollars for a temporary fix with no guarantees. However, he says that the whole roof is gonna have to be replaced within the next year or two. And that cost is yet to be determined, but we can probably figure between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars, depending on how we want to replace it, with slate, land, or other materials. I have an occasion, that's regarding the roof, just to put you on notice. I think that, my opinion would be that we need to, with all the rain that we've had, we need to do the temporary, immediately get it going, and hopefully the board can make a decision. I can call it down tomorrow and say, go for it, replace the two hundred pieces right away, because it's not...
Have you got any other calls?
He's, that's the call that he's gonna be under, emergency...
Yeah, other calls.
Well, it's not an emergency situation, it's been around for quite a while.
Well, then I'd have to, we'll have to go out and put it out a bit, but...
Nobody wants to put us bid, because it's under...
You need to get quotes.
Just call...
So you want me to have other, two other guys go out and look at two other roof repairmen?
Ask Traya, and ask...
Traya doesn't do it, I already asked her.
Okay, ask Dick West.
Dick West?
Gates, still, Gates... They don't do, they don't do, like...
They're not gonna slate, you know? Dick West, I don't think.
Dick West, what, what...
They're gonna call him? They're gonna call him? Pardon?
Who do you call?
They're gonna call Dick West, or what?
West Brothers Construction, Jay-Z.
Construction, try to get other people that do roofing, I mean, slate roofing.
Traya doesn't do that.
Traya won't touch it, I talked to him already, and he wants to do anything.
Probably his father could, but I don't think they cook the...
Well, they did, you know, I think they're looking at the... But it's gotta replace the valleys, and he was talking about the hitch joints and the... What are those?
Trusses?
The ones that come out, the darners? The darners, the valleys and all, I said they're all right, they gotta all be replaced.
So you need to repair?
Well, that's, we're gonna have to probably log them on and get that done, right? Later on, next year. If he does the immediate repairs now, he says it won't last more than a year, and he won't guarantee anything. That was one of the issues. All right, I ran into Matt Fredette, who's running the library program. He started yesterday, and he says he's very impressed with Donna Boomil, because he was, he had worked with her previously in the school system. And he said that it started off well. He's the head librarian at the Northeastern Clinton Resource Office, and very pleased with what's going on at the library right now.
Carol, did you have a chance to look at that thing from personnel on...
No, I'll do it.
Well, you'll probably have the rest of the board take a look at it quickly, because they're trying to schedule the examination for that, the civil service examination from thirty-first of August, which would be online. Nobody's going to take it online.
What is it for?
For the library technician?
For the library technician.
Civil service?
Make a copy of that for the board. We got, we got an email.
Okay, all right. The other thing, and I just happened to be looking for Michael Bryan, because I wanted to talk to him about the rec center personnel. But however, he wasn't in, so I did talk to the guy that was working.
Ray?
No, the guy that's doing the rec center roof.
Yep.
He, he was having a problem with, and we'll have to make a decision whether or not we want the electric department. He was having a problem with the scoreboard. If he, of course, they're using the big fire hose to, you know, take all of the original...
That should plug in.
Well, yeah, he was asking if he could remove it, so he could get to the wall.
Yeah, I would think that that would...
So I asked Brian, just to let you know that I was here, so I asked Brian Palkey to look at it and let us know whether or not he thinks that his department, because they didn't put it up, if they could remove the whole scoreboard, so they don't ruin it with the water, and get behind it, so we can do a good job insulating. You know, so I asked Brian to look at it, so I just wanted to let you guys know that that's what I did, I have to run into it today, and we discussed that. He's coming along real well with the roof, and he said he's gonna patch all the holes, and also made recommendations to the Michael Bryan regarding the side walls that I rusted through.
Yeah.
To put pieces in, fix that, and then he was gonna have a piece of them, so...
Place falling down around this ain't it? Well, it's not as bad as it...
If you look at it now, if you could go out and look at it, you can see the holes, I mean, you can see outside.
Yeah.
So it's got inside walls.
Yeah.
And all the, well, where the roof meets the walls, there's a lot of rust that's on that line. So we gotta get on the outside of that, if we want to save it.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna patch it on the inside, though, aren't they?
You're gonna patch it on the inside, spray the foam over it, but the outside has to be conbed, so the condensation is...
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that I had spoken to Brian about that. So Brian may, you know, we may have to, he's requested that they take the scoreboard off, so he doesn't ruin it, because the only thing they do...
That's not a problem. Brian can do it.
All right.
Yeah.
So that's basically...
Good move.
All I have.
Thank you, trustee Burtz. Trustee Baker?
One other thing.
The zoning changes that I gave you from Attorney Mene, on the zoning changes?
Yeah, that's on the...
That's on the supplemental, they reviewed some stuff with Mike, is that something that you want to...
I think we better look at what they're saying before we agree to change it, because we're gonna...
Yeah, because you have changes also...
Code review, we had the whole code reviewer, we're gonna redo it.
Yeah, yeah, so you don't want to just hold on that?
Yeah, I think we better hold off, because we're supposed to get together with Melissa sometime before the end of the year and finish that whole...
Yeah, that's gotta be completed.
Keep that, sorry. And I did want to mention that I personally saw Jerry and Jan Luterno and Kelly Penfield and Jan McFendrich, and regarding the whole parade security, and she did a fantastic job. Whoever thought of putting, you know, all the numbers and the posts out and having people line up, and Brian was there, he saw it himself, and the radio security, and they had like twelve high school kids that volunteered. It went extremely well, and I stayed with the radio, and I was able to make sure that no cars went up Montgomery Street, allowed the parade to come back through Delagars, and it was very orderly. It was fantastic, I mean, it was very good to... Well done, really well organized.
Excuse me?
Pass off the ladies, you're doing such a great job.
Thank you, trustee Burtz. Trustee Cooper?
Okay, the only thing I have is I, I looked at my notes, that's why I was so confused. I totally read my own handwriting. We got the underlives on the insurance, and they do the whole thing. Couple of things, of course, you guys know that our assessment goes up all the time, so they want six percent on our buildings, where our holdings are. A few little things in there. She pointed out that vendors are gonna have to, they come to the village, they're gonna have to show the insurance to somewhere to show the village that they're gonna be on our property. Okay. She suggested getting insurance for people that are handling our funds, for transfer of funds, you know, the treasurer, the deputy treasurer, they have insurance for that.
You're not monitored?
We are, but they're talking, she's talking about additional coverage for electronic transfers.
Oh, okay.
Which is a new, a new thing. And she ups our insurance program a little bit to a million dollars. She asked us about insurance for spills, but all of our stuff is, all our tanks and things are in the, you know, they all got their own outside tanks, so we can go on out in there. She pointed out it didn't have to go up to bid, and the only other thing I have was that letter she sent about the, you all got a copy of this, earthquake coverage, and we didn't go on, whatever you're doing. So that brings everything up to date, and, but it looks at things here as a little bit cheaper than it was the previous year.
That's good.
Even they went up six percent on the building, but then...
Well, she moved the coverage around from place to place. She's obviously working on our side on this, upping us up quite a bit here. So everything looked pretty good, and very professional, well-done, and it looked good.
Every once in, about every three to five years, you're supposed to go through your insurance, your own personal, but, you know, on the village still, you know? Just, you know, just make sure that we're up to...
Well, there's been some discussions for us to go up to bid for next year, because it's been several years since we've got it done. And it has been quite a while.
Yeah, Shamo was the last one to bid.
It's been like since two thousand and one, two thousand, I think. But it would be up to the village board whether or not we, and should we? Go ahead, George.
We need to make that decision sooner or later, because we bring a consultant in and put the package together.
Well, why don't we do this, if everybody's in agreement? And I think just to show good faith, and it should be something that we should understand. It's not because we're not happy with LeBard's agency doing our stuff and giving us a great poll, but would it be in the best interest of the village so that we can assure the people in the village that we're getting the best that we do go up to bid and put the package together, and let's say we start no later than September the first, get the package together, put it out, and then have it answered by October, so we don't get inundated. Does that give you enough time, Arson?
Pardon?
I might give you enough time. To hire a consultant, put it out to bid.
I think September is too early.
I'd say by January.
Too early?
Yeah, your new budgets, they, they want more, you know, they want up-to-date figures, so.
So what would you suggest? January?
Hire, I'd get somebody on.
You know, you need to, you need to look around where you're gonna get to be a consultant.
You couldn't ask the insurance companies, like Chauvin and all that?
They can't just do that, because that's all her, you know...
No, no, but what I'm saying, you can't ask them to...
The salt can't bid on it.
Oh, I don't, you didn't let me finish. Tell them that we're looking to get a bid on our insurance. Would you like to place a bid for...
No, 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 we gotta have a consultant, put a package together.
You have to bring somebody on board to go through and do a complete package of everything that needs to be, what we have covered.
Like Shamo did. Shamo did, I was on the board, yeah.
Yeah, like what we have covered, and then it gets submitted to the different insurance agents and they get to bid on it.
Okay.
But everybody gets the same information.
You have to make sure you compare apples to apples, and oranges to oranges.
Because that's what happens sometimes, if somebody gets told one thing and it's not passed on to the agent, well, they're gonna give you a bid that's gonna be different than...
Was it my understanding that the package that we have together now with the LeBard's Agency, that is all the items that we need in the village to be insured? So the package that we have now, as opposed to the one that we had in two thousand, should be a complete package?
Are we thinking that?
Yeah. We're gonna be able to use that as a guide.
So they would use that as a guide?
Yeah, but that, that package is also developed by LeBard's Agency.
I realize that, but isn't that public, isn't that, is that public or not?
I don't think that's, that's all that you could take.
Well, that's what was one of the questions that I had, and when we were going through this. You take, you have to be able, without the price quoting, you have to be able to give the people that are gonna have a package together, and they need to have this information.
I, I think, John, and I might be wrong in this, but we could take that ourselves, that quote thing, or that package, and write down on it and give it to, you know, if we hire a consultant, say, these are the items that we need to have looked at and need to be in the package. It would be...
What I'm saying, without the prices...
Yeah, we're just looking at...
Yeah, it's like a guide, you know.
Inland marine coverage, whatever.
Well, that's why you hire a consultant, you take care of all that stuff, because, you know...
And he will come in and look at what we got.
You could spend, you could spend a year on that stuff and not, not cover everything. So that's why you have to hire a consultant, and hopefully they...
Understand, understand that this makes a lot of work for the clerk and treasurer and everybody else in the office. However, I think that, in order to be fair, to make sure that we got the best quotes and insurance coverage, is that it's every, you know, it's since been almost ten years that we, you know, Andre's done a great job. And definitely not taking that, and she certainly probably will get the bid again.
Well, that's why you hire a consultant, to put that stuff together and look at all that stuff.
They already had the agency here. Home, and wanted to know if they could bid on the insurance, it says, we're not, we're not out to bid for it.
Right, but we, we could be. That's what I'm saying, should we do it?
I said, you know, in the next year or two, we're gonna have to go to bid for our insurance, so, you know.
And that's why I'm bringing it up now, so we don't forget it, because we just signed a contract with Andre, should we do it? You're saying not until January before, and then, but the contract comes up in June, right?
July first.
July first, so is there enough time from January to July first for somebody to come? And we have the three, knowing that's gonna be a change of board probably in, in March?
That's what, that's what they've done in the past.
Yeah. It's just keep, keep abreast of it, keep our head, you know, then we have to do it.
And plus, you would be, you would be budgeting for your insurance consultant in the upcoming budget. In March.
Oh, great.
All right, anything else, trustee Cooper?
No, that's it.
So would you, would you make a note of that, make sure to bring that back up?
Okay.
You know, because we, from meeting to meeting, we might forget.
All right, the clerk. Carol, anything, words of wisdom?
I, I have nothing, except I agree with everybody else, I think Jerry Farrow did an excellent job, and she's to be commended for what she did. It was, it was great, her work was good, nothing but good.
Thanks, Carol. Arson?
I did all Carol's remarks, there's possibility, you should probably look into to see if there's some kind of, give her some kind of a stipend or something, and because she spent hours and hours and hours, and if...
I'm thinking of a...
If the village wants to continue to have the celebration, meet somebody that's gonna...
I was gonna address that, you know, in the next couple of months, without possibly having what they call an advance.
Special one.
Event director. Something, you know...
I know the celebration's done, she's not really done either, because, I mean, she's...
Oh, yeah.
Involved with the farmer's market and all this other stuff going on, and just, you know...
You gotta pay the bills.
It's good for the village.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on what, you know, who's won in the village.
Sportsman's Club already said they're not gonna do the beer tent next year, so.
Well, we'll get somebody...
Well, then something else will happen. We'll work at that. All righty, nobody here from the public, so we'll take a short recess, or something, with the motion.
I'm watching, taking some rest.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Everyone opposed, motion carried.
Who made the motion?
Long story, Arson. Boy, can't do it in like just a few minutes, answer problems, some security problems.